But, but.
Lori, are you ready? Mike and Lori, are we ready?
If we have people talking.
How are you doing?
You're on Tuesday.
I'm sorry. I have like a messy.
Making a mess.
I know, look at me.
Hi.
Hey, how are you?
He's gonna freak out when he sees none of them back there.
Hey, Mike?
I got him.
We got one.
Oh, you got it.
That's exactly what he said. He would be freaking out.
Yeah.
He's smart.
For the consent agenda.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting of the Middleton Common Council for June 19th, 2018 to order. And the first item on the agenda is the roll call.
Present.
Olson.
Here.
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 Present.
And the next item on the agenda is the comments from the citizens present. You can stop for three minutes per speaker. So comments from the citizens present. Identify yourself and yeah, three minutes.
My name is Sandy Lewis and I live in Park Street. My husband and I have lived there for thirty-eight years. And we would like to see if we could move the budget recommendation for rectangular rapid flashing beacon lights to be installed at Park Street and Hubbard Avenue. Because that will, we won't have to sit through the whole million then. I have a statement here from the lady who was hit at that intersection. If you all read the Middleton Review, which had an article about a mother and her two children that were hit at that intersection. I have a hundred and forty-two signatures by neighbors in that area who all have agreed that we need to put those flashing lights there. Would it be possible to do that now?
And we will put it, not right now, but it will be, we will move it up, so.
Okay, I do have a statement from the mother that was in the accident. Should I wait then to read that?
Actually, you know what? Maybe this will help you. The Finance Committee did approve the acquisition and installation of those lights.
That was unanimous.
Yeah, so you don't need to worry about it, so.
Well, we can.
Perhaps.
If we can bring that up as soon as the comments are here, are done, I think we can do that. I don't know if that helps you.
We will be moving it up to right after the, I think, right after the public hearing is done, in case there might be a few more people who want to speak.
Okay, thank you.
One more question?
Yes.
You said you live on Park Street?
Yes.
Can you tell us the address?
It's 1737 Park Street.
Fantastic, thank you.
It's the beautiful house that Ed and Sandy built.
What was that?
And added on many years. It's great.
I didn't hear that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Anyone else who wants to speak?
Yes. We have some really great news to share that, about one of our staff members that I wanted to let you know about. Bill Burns recently completed certification as a, see if I can get this right, Certified Public Financial Officer. And this is a big deal. Melissa has verified for me that there are only sixteen now in the state of Wisconsin. And we have Bill. There are five hundred forty-one in the United States, sixteen in Wisconsin. So I think it's a great recognition of Bill's talents, education, and what he brings to the city, which you see on a regular basis.
Awesome.
And just really happy that he came here to work for us.
Absolutely.
With us.
And thank everyone for your support with me going through that process, which I started shortly after being hired here. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike, and congratulations again, another big hand, so. Jocelyn?
Good evening. Just wanted to give an update from the library. We've had a lot going on so far this year and we're entering into a busy, or we're already in the middle of a busy summer. So, and just have a couple categories here to go through. Facilities, programming, and circulation updates. The facility update is the Library Board of Trustees has voted to work with the design and architecture firm, HGA. And this is a national firm based out of Milwaukee. And we'll be undergoing an interior design updating using the human-centered design approach. This isn't going to involve any kind of construction. It's mostly aesthetic stuff, focusing on fixtures, furniture, minimizing the large service desks that we have right now, so that we can minimize the staff space and maximize the public space, making our floor space more flexible. It's also going to increase accessibility in the meeting room and identify things like a hearing loop and things like that to make the meeting room more accessible for all people. And then we're also going to use design aspects and color to improve accessibility, wayfinding, and just the overall experience. We're sort of calling this the DeBeijing Project. In terms of programming, the library staff continues to do a really great job in getting creative with the use of outside community spaces. For example, we hosted Dr. Richard Davidson and thirty, three hundred and sixty attendees at the Cromory Middle School's cafetorium. So we're really trying to start to look at the use of other public spaces for large programs that the library building can no longer accommodate. Another example of that, we'll be using and partnering with the PAC later this October to offer another Scholar for Life Lectured Series, hosting Dr. John Hawkes from UW. We're also going to have some outdoor fun in the green space right adjacent to City Hall as part of the Summer Library Concert Series. First coming up will be Jim Gill. So towards the end of the month, like right around the twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh, you'll see a big white tent that's going up out there. And that'll be an outdoor event that we're expecting about three to five hundred people for, all ages concert. This is the sort of thing that would be a really great fit for the eventual Plaza. We have also added a regular outreach visit to the Artisan Senior Living Community as part of our dementia-friendly community efforts in cooperation with other Dane County Public Libraries. And then we're also working with the Dane County Public Library Service and Madison Public Library to explore options to add a Readmobile stop in Middleton. And all of this programming is made possible by support with funding through the Friends of the Library. And then lastly, in terms of circulation and materials, Monday, June tenth was the highest day of circulation in five years. We had an average of six items checked out per minute throughout the day during open operations. So this is significant, and I want to share this with you, because while there's a big uptrend in adding digital and electronic materials, we're not seeing the decline in the need and value in print materials like other libraries are across the country. An average of thirty-one thousand people per month so far in 2018 are walking through the library. And this really indicates that our library patrons still very much value print materials and the third place outside of work and school and home. So more information can always be found at midlibrary.org/board for our monthly board reports. Thanks.
And we are still number one, right?
Always.
Jocelyn, I have one quick question for you. You talk about the DeBeijing of the library.
Yes.
In celebration of that at some future date, will you wear like a different color? Or something?
I know, on the DeBeijing Day, I happen to be wearing all beige. We'll definitely, we'll have public input opportunities throughout the process and to help us pick out the furniture, determine what, what colors would be best, you know, for different areas and things like that, so. And we'll definitely have a party.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Point of clarification, one should never question a woman's outfit.
Boom, thanks Emily.
Thank you.
Great job, Jocelyn. Okay, anybody else who wants to speak? It is beyond seven thirty-five. I'm going to open the public hearing part. This is the Gauss Orient Express doing business as Tagoo is requesting a Class B fermented malt beverage license located at 7610 Allen Wood Avenue, Middleton, Wisconsin. Anybody who wants to speak? Anybody who wants to speak? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing part of this meeting. All right, we can go to the item under the budget. It's a rectangular, item number one, rectangular rapid flashing beacon installation at Park Street at Hubbard Street, Hubbard Avenue.
I'll move approval.
Okay. Need a, is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion, any questions?
Actually, I would like to make approval, move, see if we can amend your motion. Approval is recommended by Finance.
By Finance.
Which was to make it budget neutral for this year.
Okay, any other discussion? Although in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Okay, you guys can go and have drinks now, so. Okay.
And please send our regards to the mother and her children.
Okay, now the next item is the presentation by Youth Center. Lot of exciting stuff here. Gabrielle and Rebecca. Gabrielle.
All right, thanks everyone. I wanted to take this opportunity to give you our annual Youth Center update. So hopefully you all received in your packet, it looks like, the PowerPoint. So I just wanted to start off with that first slide there is really, this mic is pretty intense. The program focus of the Youth Center. And I like to include this information, because I think it's really easy for us to look at the numbers of students attending and the growth we've experienced and kind of forget like what the real heart of the Youth Center is. And I really feel like it's this developing strong relationships between staff and students and working on the development of social emotional skills. So a lot we do at the Youth Center, it's very hard to quantify, it's hard to measure it. But we are doing a ton of like restorative work, conflict resolution skills, a lot of one-on-one conversations with students.
Put it down a little bit.
Is that better? Great. We also provide academic support and tutoring and communication with teachers and parents to try to kind of provide that wraparound support for students beyond their school day. And then we also provide opportunities to hands-on enrichment activities to expose students to new opportunities and develop new skills. So for operations at the Youth Center, especially for new city council members, we are open every school day during the school year. So that's about a hundred and eighty days of the year from 3:45 to 6:00 PM. We offer afternoon snack and two to three different enrichment activities all those school days, in addition to our homework help room that's available every day. During the summer, we're open about thirty-four days. And there are longer days, we have an eight-week summer program, which just started this yesterday. And we run, combined with the school district's summer lunch program that we help to staff, we run from eleven fifteen to five thirty on those days during the summer. So we do provide supervision and enrichment activities at Fireman's Park. That's concurrent with the two-hour free lunch program provided by the school district. And then from one thirty to five thirty, we have the Youth Center Only Program. That's only for the fifth through eighth grade students over at Clark Street Community School, where we also, again, provide an afternoon snack, three to four different enrichment activities depending on the day, a field trip every week. And then every Tuesday, we visit the Walter Botman Aquatic Center. Today was a cold day for that, but we still had fifty-five students who wanted to swim, so. Yes, I was not going to swim today, but they wanted to. We also have three annual special events, the Spring Showcase, the Overnight Lock-in in February, and then we do an end-of-summer camping trip in August to Devil's Lake. So for staff at the Youth Center, we have myself, the director, I am thirty hours a week. The assistant director, John, is twenty-five hours a week. We have, we're really excited to be part of the Pass AmeriCorps program. And this is our third year as a part of that countywide program. So as a part of that, we have a full-time member who averages about thirty-three hours per week year-round. And then we also have a summer pass member who works about thirty-three hours per week, but just during the summer. And so that summer position kind of tagged teams with a new part-time youth worker position that we added this fall. That works about eight to ten hours during the school year, really just providing like that direct service time. And then that position fades out at the end of the school year, and then the Summer AmeriCorps member begins in June. We also typically have one intern from either the MSW program at UW-Madison or the Social Services Program at Madison College. And it's typically about sixteen hours per week. It's an unpaid internship. So that's great for us, because we get, they're basically another staff member at the Youth Center, and they learn a lot of really great skills, especially for people interested in school social work. Our participation, participation history has been growing very steadily ever since we reopened in 2014. So you can see here, our average daily attendance rates went from sixteen in 2014, per day, twenty-nine in 2015, thirty in 2016, thirty-nine in 2017. And this number, forty-five per day from 2018, was as of about April of this year, when I first put this presentation together. And during that, those twenty-eighteen months, attendance reached fifty students or more on one-third of the days. So it is important, I think, to keep in mind that that forty-five number is an average. So our Fridays tend to be smaller, but Monday through Thursday tends to be bigger than that. So on five of those days, we had between fifty-five to sixty-one students. So moving on to participant demographics, these numbers here are from the most recent Dane County report from the spring. So during that quarter, we served a hundred and nineteen unique students. And forty-four percent of those attended twenty or more days of programming at the Youth Center. And twenty-eight students attended forty or more days. So we are a drop-in program, we have a really flexible schedule, but we do have a really core group of students that we're serving many times a week. And considering the population of the Middleton area, and especially, I think, the reputation that Middleton has, we are serving a lot of students of color and a lot of low-income families. So during that spring quarter, sixty-eight percent of the students that we served in that highest attending group were students of color, and seventy-five percent of them who self-reported their family's income were low-income. We also serve a lot of students with special education needs. And this is just from July through January. We actually have a lot of special needs students we're serving just starting this summer as well that aren't included here. You can kind of see in this chart the variety of emotional, behavioral, and learning needs that we are working with, with our students. So some of these students are supported more one-on-one during the school day, but they're not required to be supported in the same way after school. So that's always something we're trying to accommodate, you know, the needs that students need and trying to make sure that the Youth Center is an accessible space for all the students who want to participate. And one of the things we're doing that's exciting this summer, in an effort to specifically address students with cognitive special needs, is we are partnering with Spark, which is a parent group based out of Cromory. And they are offering a three-week entrepreneurship program called Camp Build. That's going to be running at the Youth Center later this summer. And it's specifically a smaller program that's going to be focused on students with autism and then also some students without special needs who are going to be kind of peer mentors for those students. It's going to help them learn a lot of soft skills, like teamwork and cooperation, and then also some actual like entrepreneurship and business skills as well. So for funding for the Youth Center, we're lucky to have a very collaborative partnership between the city of Middleton, Dane County, and the Middleton Cross Plains Area School District. So we get about eighteen thousand five hundred dollars from the school district every year. In addition to, they fund half of the AmeriCorps position. And part of that is because our AmeriCorps member works four days throughout the week at Cromory Middle School, providing school day literacy tutoring. And then she also works with us at the after-school time. We also get a lot of in-kind support from the school district. So we get busing from Cromory to the Youth Center after school. We get use of Clark Street Community School for the program for the entire year. They're also providing summer busing for us. We're also part of, like I said, the AmeriCorps program, which is not really a funding source, but it's a cash match program. So we have to provide a cash match for those positions, but then the federal grant basically provides the other half of that cost. So we're getting a really good deal out of all those hours of service that those members are providing. We're not, we're paying about half the cost of that. We also typically get about one to two small grants per year. We actually just received a five hundred and eighty-five dollar grant from the Girls Inc. of Greater Madison program. So that's going to help us to run an all-girls sports and outdoors program this summer. And a lot of the grant is going to be used to take them on a culminating field trip to Boulder's Gym to do some rock climbing. So they're going to kind of earn that with their participation over the summer. That will be their reward. And then we also do receive donations. We've received about a little over three thousand dollars in donations so far this year from some service organizations and also from Youth Center families. So as I said, the Pass AmeriCorps member, it's really cool because it's a really strong partnership with the school district. So they are helping run us, run the after-school program and summer program. And then they're also four days a week working in Cromory Middle School. And they're specifically matched up with at least five students who are reading at least two grade levels below where they should be reading. And they work one-on-one with them at least one time each week. And so our Haley, who was our Pass AmeriCorps member this year, she actually tutored six kids, because an additional kid begged her to tutor him, and so she fitted in. And she provided over one hundred individual tutoring sessions. One of her tuties actually graduated from Advanced Resource Literacy early, because they didn't need to be in the class anymore. So I think that really goes to show how much that one-on-one attention really helps. And it's also a really great connection where we have a staff member at Cromory every day, seeing the kids at lunch, seeing them in the halls, and then encouraging them to come to after-school. A few new program highlights for 2018 is we joined the Girls Inc. of Greater Madison program this January. So that's not a funding source directly, but we did receive that grant from them recently. And it also gives us a lot of access to really cool national curriculum, like about healthy relationships, girls-only sports. We ran a hip-hop dance program that was totally choreographed by our students this fall, or this spring. And then we also have access to some like Dane County-wide Girls Inc. events that we wouldn't have access to if we weren't a part of the program. So we took a bunch of girls to a women's career fair at Goodman Community Center. They met female firefighters and police officers and a chocolate maker and lawyers and doctors and all sorts of cool careers that they could consider in the future. We also started Social Justice Fridays this year. So we talked about Black History Month, women's history, student rights, autism awareness, a whole list of things, just kind of trying to broaden the students' minds in those areas. And also new for this summer is we have, our bus route is running four days a week. So every day during the summer program, there's a bus route that hits a few spots in Middleton. It hits Oliver Park neighborhood, because those students go to our school district. And it also hits Don's Mobile Manor. So we're really trying to target some communities and neighborhoods that wouldn't have transportation to come to Middleton for programs, but who really need summer opportunities for their kids. And we've seen a big increase in ridership on that bus, because last year we offered it only two days a week. This year, the school district was willing to pay for it four days a week. And I think that consistency is making a really big difference in those kids being able to get to our program. One exciting thing I did want to share with you all is some new ideas we're considering for fall of this year. In part because we have such high attendance and growing numbers, we're trying to really talk about as a staff, how can we keep providing the quality of service that we have been providing and the relationship building and the restorative behavior and all that, when we have so many students coming, over a hundred students in a month? And sometimes well over fifty in a day. And so what we're looking at doing is, some of our ideas, we're doing more one-on-one mentoring. So matching each student with a designated staff member. So instead of every staff member, all five of us, trying to keep up to date on the lives of maybe two hundred students, each of us would be assigned a smaller group of students that we would make sure to check in with during the week, set goals with them, work on behavior planning, do a lot of those one-on-one conversations with those same students. We're also looking into doing mini-courses. So right now, we have different activity options every day, but they're one-time activities. And so it's, you have to figure out how to do an art project that will be, start to finish, done in an hour. And so we want to do some more mini-courses. That would be month-long, so the student would sign up and say they'd come every Monday for four weeks and maybe learn photography, or learn how to do spoken word, or learn how to do something that would take a little bit more time. And also, we want to make our study hall, like break it into different rooms for students who do better studying on their own in a quiet environment, for students who want to do group study, for students who want to work with tutors. So we did survey about forty-five parents primarily about the new program model ideas. And we also talked with a lot of students directly to get their input. And feedback was mainly positive, sixty percent positive. And most students were really excited about the mentoring idea, and many were also very excited about the new mini-course options. So those were positive responses we got. The top concern by far from parents and students was flexibility. Our program right now is completely flexible. You enroll, and then you're in, and you show up when you want to show up, and you sign out with us when you want to leave, and you cannot come for two months and then randomly show up, and it's fine. Your club at school could get canceled, and so you just show up at the Youth Center instead. And so parents really didn't want to lose that kind of flexibility, because this is kind of like the fallback program for a lot of families, and they know it's there, and they know their students can attend. So we are planning on doing a hybrid model that will still allow for that flexibility and for the drop-in program. But instead of having two drop-in programs every day, we'll have one drop-in program and one mini-course. So students will still have that option. And then we're going to focus the mentoring on students who attend the Youth Center three days per week or more, which ends up about, being about fifty students throughout the course of the year that meet that criteria. They do tend to be our lower-income students and more students of color and students that we sometimes are seeing more the need to have that one-on-one support with and that relationship building and trust-building with. So each staff member will have one day of the week where they're focused on check-ins with their mentees, and they won't be leading programming that day, and then we'll rotate that. So ideally, all those students who are attending regularly will know that they're getting a one-on-one check-in with a staff member every week. So yeah, I also have a kind of large announcement, which is, for the first time in the Youth Center's history, we are now, we started an enrollment waitlist. So our summer program opened yesterday, and we had sixty-three students show up. And we had sixty-three show up today. And we have four staff members over the summer. And given the number of students with special needs we're serving, the number of students, I really feel that a one-to-ten staff-to-student ratio is what is safe and appropriate at the Youth Center. And so I really would like that number to be closer to forty-five students with four staff. So after yesterday, we did start a waitlist. So students who are already enrolled from the school year and last summer can come, and students who have turned in their enrollment already. But normally, we accept enrollment throughout the entire year. But we're just not able to do that anymore with the number of staff we have and the space and funding and all of that. So we're basically going to run the waitlist where families can still enroll their students, and they'll be put on the list in the order their enrollment is received. If numbers go down and spaces open up, we'll contact those families and let them know that they can begin attending the Youth Center. And likely, that's what's going to happen for the fall as well, where I'll probably be reaching out to currently enrolled families, seeing what they're looking at for participation in the after-school program and going from there. So based on our staff numbers, I would like to keep it closer to forty-five during the summer and fifty-five during the school year on days when we have five staff. And last fall, we were already averaging about fifty per day, so it's not going to give us a huge room for growth. But yeah, just wanted that also to be something that everybody here was aware of, something worth figuring out. And it's obviously unfortunate to have to do it, because there's a lot of families in this community who are showing that they're, they want their students participating in this program. this program. But I also feel like keeping it safe and keeping the quality and the relationships and all of that is also something we have to keep in mind. So that is our plan going forward. Thank you. I know that was kind of a lot of information, but I only come about once a year, so if you have any questions or comments, I'd be happy to answer them as well.
Robert?
I would just like to say, it seems to me that the youth center is a victim of its own success. You, I mean, going from 16 students a day in 2014 to 45 students a day on average, and like you said, 50, 55, whatever, and now 65 here during the summer. That is amazing. It's scary. You know, it's, it's, we, this is such a valuable program, and I'm amazed at how much you and your staff do with so little. And I, I just wanna thank you and hope that we can continue to expand whatever we can because this is such a valuable program year-round. And thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Based on the flexible nature of the enrollment, and if you have 45 students, they're not all coming on the same day, how do you calculate that? Or do you say these 45 can come every day and we can't have any other? Or how do you?
Yeah, honestly, it's kind of just a game of guessing. Cuz we've never, like I said, we've never limited enrollment before. So it is just kind of averages. So I definitely, like I'm taking like the week average and the month average and kinda seeing where we're at. Definitely with 63 kids yesterday and today, we know it's too high. So just because, like I don't wanna leave any families stranded, we're not kicking out kids that we've already accepted and enrolled. But we have, like typically even during the school year, we're accepting enrollments here and there almost every day. And then kids, you know, they, they go to a camp or something like that. So I think our numbers will, hopefully, we'll be able to bring them down a little bit after this first week. But it will just be kind of seeing where the numbers are hitting.
By what the attendance was down by the normal counts, would you ask some people from the waitlist, maybe three that were more to come on a Friday only, or?
Yeah, potentially, we could look at that. We've never had students sign up before for like certain days of the week.
Okay.
So, but we do know, like that's a good example where we do know we always have fewer students on Fridays during the school year. We're not even open on Fridays during the summer because we've concentrated our hours into Monday through Thursday to serve more students. But yeah, that would be definitely an option during the school year to say they could start coming on Friday only until more space opens up. Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions for Gabrielle?
Now, Mike?
Not a question, but a comment. Just that Gabrielle, I've been here at the time, four and a half years ago, she put forward a proposal that basically rescued the youth center program for the city. And she has shown tremendous commitment and ability, not only in meeting the needs, but exceeding that and adding services that bring equity to a community that really needs additional help and assistance. And moreover, Rebecca Kreis, in the last three years, has really helped that along quite a bit. And this summer lunch program is a great example of that. With the collaboration of the school district, we've been able to do more, and it's been an essential partnership with the school district. But we're very fortunate to have and keep Gabrielle in this position in a way that's really addressing these are the community that wouldn't otherwise be met. So thank you.
Thanks.
Now Gabrielle, I have, go ahead, Mark. I have one question too.
Go ahead, go first.
Well, what is the capacity of that Clark Community School? I know the, you know, you use some of the rooms, you offer different programs. I don't know if they let you use the whole building or not, but considering how many rooms they have, what can you, what is, what is their capacity for your use?
Right now, you're correct, we don't have use of the whole building. I think we're really approaching that number. I think Clark Street Community School at its top enrollment has about 100 students. But that requires use of all those classrooms, which obviously requires staff for each classroom. They have a lot more staff than we have. So one of our struggles is during the school year, especially because we do snack and all the big stuff out at the park during the summer because it's spacious. But during the school year, all the kids come and they have afternoon snack right away. And we actually don't even have enough seats now, a lot of days, for everybody to have snack in the big room together. And we're not supposed to have food in the other parts of the building. So there's things like that where we could definitely expand into more classrooms, it would just require more staff and more different activities in those rooms. There's also bigger school district conversations happening right now about Clark Street potentially moving to the high school and this building potentially becoming a 4K building, in which case it's not really gonna work for the youth center anymore, cuz everything will be sized for 4K students. So the district has definitely, I actually gave a very similar presentation to this one to the school board in May, and they were very supportive of the program and of making sure to find the youth center a home if and when Clark Street Community School changes buildings. So that'll be an ongoing project also.
Mark?
I'm glad to hear that the school board is supportive of this. Mike, have you had discussions with them in terms of potentially sharing the cost of an additional headcount?
You mean staff person?
Yes.
We've focused more, more doesn't.
Want us to jump in?
Oh, go ahead.
All right. So that was part of our meeting when we met with the school district when Gabrielle presented. They did talk about that. They've actually met with us separately, Gabrielle and I. Mark, Mike has not been part of the discussion. In terms of, we have a five-year user agreement that is set up between the recreation department, which includes the youth center, that yearly gets reviewed for the youth center, but then it's supposed to have a five-year shelf life in terms of our agreement between the two. So we've started the discussions, they come back with a new agreement. They're going before the school board, hopefully next week, in terms of the agreement. So we've started the discussion with how can we keep moving forward? They've actually started a cooperative buying program. They're gonna have Gabrielle actually hopefully be able to purchase some other things through the school district to use some cooperative buying power. So we've discussed the staff piece of it, but looking at that new staffing model, when we went and presented to the school district, we didn't have a finalized program model for that yet. And then we also wanted to look at the numbers for the summer. So the discussion has started, there's been no official commitment.
But they have already started, or they will be starting their new fiscal year July 1. So those decisions are probably not.
I think what we're trying to do is just look at how we can work cooperatively too with some of the things that we talked about with them was the internship program they have and reaching out to some of the student teachers that they have and other ways that they might be able to employ people in maybe a roundabout way.
Can you think, might have some more information for the next council meeting?
For the next, our next council meeting? Or, no. But we, we've got the initial agreement moving forward, and then we're trying to look at the buying power for a couple other pieces. So we know it's there, we keep putting it forward because the piece that Gabrielle hasn't explained to you either tonight is, they've blown through their entire food budget for the year, because if you look at our numbers, we've, we've provided 10 more snacks every day of the week on average this school year. And if you have 63 kids during the course of the summer, that you now have to provide 20 more snacks on a daily basis to these kids. That's why we were having the discussion with the school district as well. We've, we've talked to them, we know we have to figure out a plan to be able to move forward and serve people or have that. We've also looked at reaching out to, I've already contacted a couple of different colleges to see if we could possibly also get some student interns from the therapeutic recreation program for the fall to do some community-wide, to address some of our students with special needs and other things. So we are looking at possibilities and what we can do and, and different ways to kinda mend the gap.
It is also, I think, a real challenge for the school district side of things because there's a problem with equity within the school district, where these kids at Cromery now have a youth center, and the kids at Glacier Creek do not have a program. And there is a really highly concentrated pocket of poverty of students coming from the Elver Park area who go to Glacier Creek, who do not have after-school or summer options. So that's one of the reason, reasons we're busing out to Elver, but obviously, we can't just absorb all those students at the youth center. So there are also like larger school district conversations going on about how do we maybe get a youth center going out across plains? How do we address after-school programs that are not running like at West Middleton? So I just know, like as far as whenever we talk to the school district, it's also like a much bigger, like they love the youth center, they wanna support us, but they have very limited funds as well. And there's definitely like a group of, understandably, like parents and community members wondering why the same opportunity is not available to all the schools in the district. So I think that's a bigger picture conversation that they're also having.
And I know that a lot of people don't see what we do behind the scenes in terms of like what we're trying to do and, and kind of address that bigger picture, because one of the things that we constantly talk about is that, you know, as a city, we can't absorb every last school district resident. We understand that because we also have really limited resources. So how can we look at trying to find things that are free or reduce costs, or can we find an intern or something else to help us serve those needs? So we've been doing a lot of work behind the scenes with that and serving on a couple of different committees throughout the district and throughout the community, like Joining Forces for Families and other things, just to see how we can tack, attack into some of the other resources that might be out there to help support us to keep moving forward.
Any other questions? I agree with what Robert and Mike said, let's give them both a big hand here. Thank you. That's making a difference for a lot of kids. Okay, the next item, the approval of the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
I'd like to take out item four and five. I think the dates on here need to be adjusted.
Okay, we take item four and five. All those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, item 1 to 3, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. Kathy, four and five.
Um, number four, when I saw the application, it was for September 22nd, and item five was for Thursday, July 26th. I thought that looked like a lot of activity in downtown Middleton for one day.
Okay.
So move approval with those two changes.
Need a second?
So Kathy, for changing.
The, on the black party, I saw the date was September 22nd.
Yep.
And then for the shop in blues, Thursday, July 26th. But we got the dates completely wrong.
Okay, Kathy, that's a great job.
Yeah.
To decide which one to go to is the only part.
Okay, so do you want to keep the other ones separate, or you just want to move only this one, right?
No, four and five, with approval of those two, with those date changes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. We are on to licenses. Item number one, renewal applications for 2018, 19, Class A and Class B intoxicating liquor, Class A and Class B fermented malt beverage, malt beverages, and Class C wine licenses. These are all the licenses, so need a motion to approve.
Move approval is recommended by LNO.
Second.
Okay, any questions or discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor of approving all these licenses, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. The next one is the acceptance of recommendation of LNO committee, revocation of Class B fermented malt beverages and Class B intoxicating liquor license held by Star UWM LLC, doing businesses, Star BBQ, Barbecue, Fitzgeralds on 13, 3112 Paramount Street. So now, somebody was supposed to give a report, I think when I was going through this, there was, somebody was supposed to find out that.
They have not been open.
Okay, so where are they?
They're closed. They have not been open for a continuous year.
Okay.
The building, I was there today, the building is still red-tagged. It was red-tagged on May 8th by Bill Nitzel. The notice on every door is still up, the notice says, "The building cannot be used for human habitation, occupancy, or use per section 66.0413 of the state statutes of Wisconsin." So obviously, with those tags on the door, the business is not open. And I can tell you just from my observations that they have quit working on any improvements. Captain Britt spoke to the maintenance crew that was doing some renovations, and they haven't gotten paid as of 10 days ago. We lost contact with the owner, but they were given a real specific set of things to do to maintain their license. LNO was very cognizant of the fact that there was a lot of value in this liquor license, and they'd put a lot of work into the business up to that point, but they have not met any of the requirements that LNO has asked for and have not been open for that long period of time.
Okay.
And I would move that we accept the recommendation of LNO to revoke the Class B in parentheses, fermented malt beverage, and Class B in parentheses, intoxicating liquor license held by Star UWM.
Okay, need a second.
Second.
Okay, so any questions or discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. Now we are on to agreements. Item number one, city dweller agreement with golf construction and real estate for Gateway Street and Car and Cross Lane water main extension and sidewalk construction, only two items. Water main and sidewalk construction, need a motion to approve.
Although approval is recommended by Public Works.
Two second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So motion passes unanimously. So the next one is item number two, city dweller agreement with strategic behavioral health LLC for Miramont Behavioral Health 3169 Damming Way.
Although approval is recommended by Public Works. Second.
Any question or comments? All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. Item number three, storm water management system maintenance agreement with Miramont Behavioral Health LLC 3169 Damming Way, the same.
Move approval is recommended by Public Works.
Okay.
Second.
Plan Commission.
Any questions or comments? Otherwise, all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. Item number four, revised real estate purchase and sale agreement with William and Sue Heine.
Although approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Bill, do you have that change, or is that gonna get reflected in the final documents?
Yeah, I do have that, and we can update that in the document. It was just a, there was just a typo of the word.
Any other corrections or comments? All those in favor of this.
Comment.
Yes.
And I mentioned this at Finance Committee, but with the full council here and the video as well, on November 21st, the council in open public session approved the purchase of these properties, this and the, the next one on the agenda, after the, the school district withdrew their interest in the properties for a potential high school referendum, or school district referendum, I should say, for the high school. So it was in open session, it was public, there was a public discussion about that. We then met several times to discuss the environmental issues with the property, the legal implications for purchase, relocation. All of that was in closed session, but noticed appropriately on your agendas. And there have been questions about that in the local news media, and I think it's something that needs to be addressed. And mentioned that the council started this process completely within open public session and a public discussion.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Item number five, this is the real estate purchase and sale agreement with Paul Kemp Investments.
Move approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Mike?
Uh, just to to mention that we have a draft um RFP that will be discussed at the Plan Commission next Tuesday and hopefully back to the council on July third, but the request for proposals would be for development of these two sites together. And we'll be getting that process going right away. And again, it's to request from the private sector ideas within a scope of work that uh has been identified by city staff, again, subject to the Plan Commission and the council reviewing and hopefully approving.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Next one is a storm water management system maintenance agreement with Robert Blatner, lots one and two of the new certified survey map, three one, three one five five and three one six nine Damming Way. So Sean, do you want to say, explain what we are doing here? It's only that forty feet wide area, which is.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Next one is uh under annexation, item number one, ordinance annexing lands from the town of Westport, Redtail Acres subdivision, four eight two one county highway queue, four point nine eight acres, annex two to one.
So Mayor, I I have a, just a preliminary discussion here. The, this was approved in December, I believe. The minutes from the December fifth council meeting um recommended approval of pre-annexation with the following conditions prior to annexation was first was the approval of storm water management agreement, uh approval of access issues on highway queue, um and then thirdly, uh density plantings and birmingham of the buffer for existing neighborhoods to the north. Um, so my question is, have those three conditions been met?
Okay, who's going to address this issue?
I'm the developer, Bill, right here.
Hi, Ben.
Hi. Um, the Department of Administration has approved the annexation on it. We are meeting with the um water resources tomorrow and every indication is that it's, everything has been cleared for storm water with them. What was your other?
So it wasn't Department, it was the uh, the county with access to queue has, have all those issues been resolved?
That's been approved. I have the access permit.
Okay, and so then the second was water resources, the storm water maintenance plan has to be approved. And then the third was there were, uh, planning had had recommended some buffering between um that, between your development and the neighborhood to the north. Is there an approved plan for that?
I, I would have to say no. That has not been brought up since during all the preliminary plat drawings.
Based on that, I would move that we defer this until you can can show that these items have been approved um from the various committees, right? This was something that was was indicated in December that these were required prior to annexation. So at least two of them are not met, or at least one of them has not met yet. The third, you don't know about yet. So I would move that we defer these until you can come back and definitively state all, all these conditions have been met.
Well, we do know about the storm water because the county has approved it. It needs to then go into the Middleton Water Resources.
So then it hasn't been approved yet.
Hasn't been approved.
My motion is to defer until there's evidence of of approval for these items.
Can you repeat the items?
Um, the first is uh approval of storm water management plan, approval of access issues on highway queue, and then it says density plantings and birmingham of the of the buffer for existing neighborhoods to the north.
Thank you.
Eileen, do you have anything to say?
We do have a public hearing scheduled at the Plan Commission next Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, and I think at that time we could have hopefully the approval from tomorrow night's Water Resources. And um we will work with the applicant on the buffer um and roll all of the things into a recommendation to be brought back to the next uh council meeting, if that's appropriate, the July third meeting. So it it sounds like from the co- staff comments of the Water Resources, and I apologize, I was out of the room when this started, I thought it would take a little longer to get to this one. You guys are fast. Um, it sounds like the recommendation is approval. Sounds like the applicant has met in his storm water management plan. Um, they had asked for going from ninety percent stay on of the storm water to a hundred percent, and the Water Resources had also potentially offered um funding to get to that a hundred percent, or some assistance with that. But uh it sounds like the applicant's engineer is saying he's meeting a hundred and four percent of it.
Wow.
So it's exceeding it, that's good, and not asking for funding. So hopefully, we can have that at the Plan Commission next Tuesday at the hearing, and then we would have the annexation and the plat and the um zoning back at your next meeting. So, thanks.
Okay, we need.
Second, Mark, this is motion.
Okay, okay, any further discussion?
Uh, Mayor, I'd just like to clarify, oftentimes it is said that the county has approved it, and what that means is the county contracts with the city for storm water management regulations. So uh they then are a recommendation to the city. It's not that the county approves it, it's that they are contractual with the city for storm water and erosion control. And so I just wanted to clarify that because sometimes that gets confused.
Oh, okay. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of this motion to defer it until the next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion is deferred until the next city council meeting. So the next is the ward of the bid code and professional services, item number one. This is the ward of bid for crack filling and seal code.
I'll move.
You can go ahead, ladies first.
Move approval is recommended by Finance Committee.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, so this is for the micro-surfacing. This is a trial. So I'm curious, Sean, how long is this trial going to last? And how are you going to decide if it's worth the increased cost? Or we start doing anything?
Sure. I I think we'll be looking for signs of distress at the end of a uh usable life of a surface treatment like this. We notice pretty significant removal of the material, from plows especially, uh sometimes from turning movements. It it doesn't last forever and it's not meant to, but we want to get a feel for under differing traffic conditions, you know? What's the difference between this and our experience with chip sealing?
Trial going to be one year or two years?
No, we'll have to monitor it for a longer term than that.
Six-year trial.
Yeah, that's what I want to know before.
I think what we want to figure out is, as people are driving around on it, how long did it last in place?
But we're not going to have a request next year for all micro-surfacing.
I I think uh surface treatment is is how we'll approach that, and it'll be a decision, uh you know, what we want to bid and what we want to do.
So next year will be chip sealing.
We, this budget is set up for crack filling and and uh surface treatment.
No, but first, I'm talking about for the twenty twenty budget, or twenty nineteen budget.
Right. Again, we were, we were asking for a pavement maintenance uh essentially budget with a determination to be made at this time as to how we want to allocate that.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Otherwise, all those in favor of the motion to prove the ward of bid for crack filling and seal code, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Now we are on to, we already passed item number one, it's under budget, we are on to item number two, request for additional tax increment, realistic number five, funding for northeast Milton Connector Path.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, so we started this discussion at Finance, and I I think, just for the members that weren't present, it's important to note that uh the original TIF funding request was for seventy-five thousand dollars for the western portion of this, and the price has gone up to over uh around a hundred and seventy to complete that portion of it. And so now, what's also being conflated with this is is a project for the east side of this trail, um which is outside of our normal budgeting approval process. And I don't remember if our discussion included a funding source for that, was there? So what we're doing here is we're telling different constituents here in the city that it's okay to come before the council and request funding for capital outside of the budget cycle. And I think that's a bad precedent to set. And that's really what this is, is what we're, we're, what this request is, is a pre-funding agreement on the capital plan for nineteen. And I think that's a bad mistake and bad precedent for us to set. Is that a question or a comment?
You want to say anything, or?
I I think this is entirely a policy choice for the council. I I'll give you a little more background from what's in the memo that um I wrote and with Bill. I asked specifically in the request for proposals that the west and east segments be separated and to get that broken down, the costs broken down for both segments, because I anticipated that there could be a cost savings having one firm hire to do both segments. So I asked them to break down the costs so that we could do an apples-to-apples comparison with the original budget of seventy-five thousand. If the council wishes to not accept the Plan Commission recommendation, or just to limit the approval to proceeding with uh in agreement with KL Engineering just to design the west segment, perfectly fine with me, you know, at the staff level, that's, that's, that's not our decision, that's a council decision. If you want to wait until the two thousand nineteen budget deliberation process to have a discussion about the east segment, I completely understand that.
So Mark, in the budget, it was only the western part.
Right.
And so how did it get uh, RFP got into the whole part?
Well, as I, I just tried to mention that, I was trying to find a way, I was trying to maximize the opportunity to save money down the road, not knowing that it was going to come back, that the three proposals would come back so expensive. Regardless of of that, I was trying to anticipate the likely future phase two of the project and asking consulting firms to give us a proposal for both and separate the costs out, and we have that in all three proposals. One of the respondents, maybe even more than one, specifically said that they would discount the eastern segment if they were chosen for both. So I realize, I mean, this is consistent with our adopted bicycle pedestrian plan, but the budget for this year, as Alder Sullivan correctly noted, was only for the western segment for seventy-five thousand dollars. And we, at the staff level, I'll take responsibility for it, we underestimated that. We just didn't know it was gonna, that consultants would be so, so expensive. I presume there's a lot of work out there and, and, and maybe costs have gone up in ways that we didn't anticipate. But um this is entirely a a council policy decision as to whether you want to just limit this to the west segment as was budgeted, albeit now with the, as you said, a hundred and ten percent roughly increase. I'm hoping it'll be quite a bit less than that. I have, I've actually talked to several of the property owners, CVS, Old National, Goodwill, Middleton Shores, I've spoken with all of them, and that's probably, and that quite, maybe about forty percent of the segment length. And east of that, uh going up the hill, are just two property owners, albeit condo associations. So that's another large section of the, of the route. So the majority of the property, I anticipate being very easy to get an agreement to acquire, either by easement or or acquisition. The western segment, in your proposals, in each proposal, I asked for respondent, respondents to um provide an alternatives analysis as to whether we go in front of the houses along Century across from where Quick Trip and Geno's are. And and instead of going in front of the houses, look at the option of going north of the houses, um along the edge of the conservancy, behind the rear yard, you know, in the rear yards. And to to weigh that as part of the design process, because there's been some opposition uh from the residents, the property owners there, near Brant, between Branch and Amherst, basically on the north side. So I've tried to position the city to to make this, lay out all the issues in advance so that you could decide whether you wanted to go with just the west segment for now, or as the Plan Commission thought might be advantageous to, to begin proceeding, uh they recommended proceeding also with the design of the eastern segment. If you don't wish to do that, that's obviously a council decision.
Is there any harm in delaying all of this until twenty nineteen and saying that you, you have seventy-five to, to put a budget request in both for additional TIF and capital spending in the nineteen budget process? What's the impetus to have to have this done tonight?
Uh, safety. There's a lot of, well, this has been discussed for several years. We applied for Transportation Alternatives Program grant, which we rescinded um with my recommendation based on consultant feedback we had gotten with the original round of RFPs. Uh, but the public, and I think Alder Ramsey will tell you that some of his constituents have been asking about this for years, um and I think up in Orchid Heights, actually, we've had people asking about it too. This has become a very, you know, as the northeast side of the city grows, um the only connection to the city is, the only all-season connection is Century, is Century Avenue and that narrow sidewalk that has overhanging branches and, and you know, is very limited. Obviously, there's also the connection through the eastern end of the conservancy, but that's gravel, it's not all-season, and there's a lot of people who don't wish to see that path improved to be all-season, all-weather, if you will.
Arc, how wide is that sidewalk on Century?
At best, four feet, but there's a lot of grass encroaching, so I would say, Sean, what's a typical sidewalk width, one, it's like three and a half, maybe?
Three.
Three and a half feet, so it's, it's narrow.
Really inadequate.
Yeah, and so this has been a longstanding issue that we're trying to deal with. There has been an increase in bicycling in Middleton, um and an increase in pedestrian activity, I think that we've all observed over the last, certainly I've seen the increase over the last five to ten years. And um there's just a lot of pressure that's been expressed through the Pedestrian Bicycle Transit Committee and through District Seven's Alder to, and and his predecessor to address this issue.
Emily has a question.
But nothing has really changed, right? You you said safety, but there's nothing that has changed that that has made that safety profile different today, or different three months from now than it was three months ago.
I I would say that the bridge crossing, the sidewalk as it crosses the bridge has become more uneven, so I mean, there's, I mean, there could be some patching on both bridges, actually, the western and the eastern, but both are in the west segment. Uh, the one between Branch Street and Old Creek Road is closed right now on the north side because it needs significant repair, there's a sinkhole apparently, and that will be repaired this summer, as I understand from Sean. And then the bridge to the east, um between Marina Drive and the condos, Harbor, I always forget the name of that, um Creek Harbor, Creek View, Creek View, Harbor Village, no, yeah, Creek View.
But both of those will be repaired before you can possibly get the trail in. So again, the safety profile hasn't changed outside of.
There's.
A routine maintenance.
There's more people that are using the paths, so there's more people that are subjected to, you know, the existing path conditions.
Haven't given me a compelling reason that says that's profile's changed, that this is now an emergency to get this thing funded right now. You gotta look this way once in a while.
The Emily is first and then, then you are. No, Emily, and then.
Um, I I wanted to point out that um I've, I've walked that path with a stroller, and it's not easy. Um, I'm lucky. I'm lucky that a runner didn't come towards me because it wasn't wide enough on Century for my stroller, my double stroller. I don't think it's two and a half feet wide. And maybe it was the branches, but I can tell you that after that mom was hit, I think that is a difference. And I can say that because there's many times that I'm walking. And I think the difference is, when I talk to people who are new into my district, because I get a lot of people moving in and out, is that they want to be able to walk around. They moved to Middleton because it's neighborly, and it's a walking pedestrian friendly. And they said, you know, I want to be able to walk to downtown. I want to be able to walk to the parks. And when I walked that path, I was, I was actually surprised how thin that sidewalk was.
Thank you.
Dan?
I have a question about the, the TIF financing. And Mike walked out.
Well, and Bill is obviously having...
The, the west side building can be done with, with TIF funds because it's within the mile and a half?
Within half a mile.
Or half a mile? Okay. But the east part can't? Correct? That would be capital funding?
That's been our interpretation, yes.
So the question that I have is, will TIF funding pay for the design for the entire east and west? In other words, if we take the east part out and say, we're not going to pay for the design for that this year, then does that put that into capital? By combining them, can they both be TIF for the design? Do you understand what my question is?
Dan?
Larry looks like he's gonna weigh in.
I was gonna say, ultimately, I'll defer to the, the city attorney, but my thought would be that the area within the half mile would be eligible for design and construction with the TIF because it's in the TIF project plan. The area that's outside of the half mile, I wouldn't think there would be an argument for TIF to fund the design of something that's outside of the half mile.
Well, Larry, keep...
I agree.
Is there some way that could be?
I don't think so.
We're talking about TIF funding beyond, okay. And I would add that the half a mile limit that we're talking about is about, is a couple hundred feet east of the signalized intersection of Highland Way, which is where the west, that's the eastern limit of the western segment. So we chose that segment for a couple reasons. One, that is the most critical segment, because that is truly the only link between, you know, across the bridge, that bridge is the only link between the northeast side and the rest of the city. So that's why that's the first phase. But it's also the funding phase, if you will, where TIF is assured, you know, where TIF can be. We can make a good argument that TIF is an appropriate funding vehicle.
So, Mark, a couple of other questions. Now, you say that you have already taken about forty percent of the real estate part there, so...
I've had a dialogue, we, between different staff, have had a dialogue with Dawn Casper as she sold the CVS site, and easement was obtained across the front of the CVS parcel.
No, that's legal. That's done deal.
It's done, right.
Yes.
But we're in the process of obtaining the easement for the western, the next two parcels that she owns, that she still owns, across Old National Bank and Goodwill. So that's in, in progress right now.
Okay.
And then, to the east, immediately across Allen Court, we have the Middleton Shores...
Yep, yep.
Middleton, Middleton Shores Apartments. And I sat down with them last summer, if not the summer before, and talked with them about it. And at first, they were very concerned about the project, and they seemed to be objecting to it. And then out of the blue, two or three weeks later, they contacted me and said they were fully on board. So I anticipate minimal difficulty, you know, with acquiring the land we need for that, for that path there.
So that is something which you could get done without getting these folks involved?
Well, we still need to prepare the legal documents, you know, the, and record that, I mean, all that real estate stuff that I'm not versed in needs to still occur, but it can be done at a much reduced expense without having to do property owner...
Construction phase?
Well, it's, it's listed as part of the design, and in the agreement we would have with KL, that would be part of the, of the design and real estate. It would be part of that agreement. You need to have the land before you can construct on it, so construct it.
Yes, that I understand, but that's not actually purchasing or whatever the land...
Oh, I see what you mean.
...for the design.
Well, that's true.
That's what I was talking about.
Yep, that's, that's a...
What we're voting on right now.
But I'm hopeful, just to elaborate a little bit further, we have an informal policy that I, talking with Sean, I think there, there could, we could, staff would be, would find it helpful to have a more formal policy about when the city decides to maintain a path, a ten-foot wide path in front of, along a road, and when it doesn't. We, from my observation, and Mike and I have talked about this, and I think there's quite a bit of comfort with this in the room, you know, when the city widens a sidewalk and makes it, converts it into a ten-foot wide path, think along Demming Way, you know, by Randan, State Bank across Plains, in front of Monks and Costco, you know, that, and then also in front of Parmenter Circle and the Chocolate Shop, Hertz Donuts, those are two ten-foot path segments. And those are maintained by the city, although there's been some informal agreement to have the, the segment in front of Parmenter Circle that is maintained by the adjoining property owner. But there's, those are the same type of path systems that, we consider those regional trail segments. And I could, so getting back to the northeast connector, it's been my understanding that there's support for, as we approach those property owners, to say, look, you know, in exchange for, if you work with us to acquire the land, because we have some limitations now, thanks to the state, with, with acquisition, acquisition of land for bike, for shared-use paths. But if you work with us, we will, in exchange, maintain this in the future. And having a city pickup truck go down the bike, you know, the, the shared-use path is a lot easier for people than individually, especially if you think of between the two Highland Ways, where there's individual parcels, and people have to go out through their fence or around the block to shovel their sidewalks. And I'm sure, I think most people, if not all, from talking with Alder Ramsey, would, would take that deal in a second. So I'm hopeful that, that that will be the approach we follow, is that, that in exchange for, you know, helping make real estate acquisition minimally expensive.
Okay.
The reason for, for moving the design forward now is that we have promised these people for a lot of years that something was going to happen on the northeast to make it safer move about the city, just like everybody downtown does. If we decide not to do anything tonight, and we decide to wait, what we're telling those people again is, I'm sorry, but it's not going to be in 2019, it's going to be in 2020. And we've done this for a number of years now. And if we're going to be, and if we're going to claim to be bike and pedestrian friendly, and we make assurances to people that we are going to do that, at some point, we have to do that without continually putting it off year after year after year.
Mike, I, I think the main question is, we had the west part already in the budget, and... And the question is whether we do the west and the east both, or just the west?
The question.
Well, I'm the chair, and I'm, want to have this discussion, let us say. Mike, you have something to say?
Well, I think a motion, a move to call the question proceeds any further discussion, right, Larry? I did have a comment, but I can wait.
Okay, so the motion is to call the question. All those in favor, does it need a second or not?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion by Susan is to call the question, need a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of calling the question, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Aye.
Okay, so motion passes six to one. Okay, so now we vote on this motion, right? So, so the motion was to approve, right? Is that the motion?
Yes.
Recommended by Finance, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion passes six one. Okay, we are on to CSM Platte. Platte approval, replatte of lots four and five of Heim's Woods. Alene, wants to mention anything?
It was recommended by Public Works.
Okay, need a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of this motion, motion to approve the replatte of lots four and five, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So the motion passes. The next one is approval of certified survey map for Miramont Strategic Behavioral Health three one six nine Demming Way.
Approval was recommended by Public Works.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of this motion to approve the certified survey map for Miramont, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So the motion passes unanimously. We are on to miscellaneous. Acceptance of 2017 audited financial statements.
Move approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All of those favor of this motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So the motion passes unanimously. Next one is the authorization to fill the position of part-time information technician position at the police department.
Move approval is recommended by Finance and Personnel.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of this motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So the motion passes unanimously. Next one is the update of tourism directors' position description.
Motion to recommend, as approved by Personnel and Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the rule of the update of the tourism directors' position description, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So the motion passes unanimously. Replacing city's, all master is retiring, so...
Move approval is recommended by Personnel and Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? And the recommendation is to go with the outside service, so. All those in favor of this motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So the motion passes. The ordinance is first reading, final action may be taken upon approval of the motion to suspend rules under section 1.07 of Milton General ordinances. Ordinance to amend section 16.052E relating to the hours of operation for certain tools, machinery, and equipment. This is Saturday's added, so...
Move approval is recommended by LNO. And yes, let's go ahead and suspend.
Second.
Okay, you know what is happening? We're just adding Saturday rather than...
State mandate.
The state mandate. Okay, all those in favor of this motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So the motion passes unanimously. Ordinance to amend various parking restrictions on Demming Way. There are two, three different sections there, so...
Move approval is recommended by LNO.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? All those in favor of this motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So motion passes unanimously. An ordinance to create an ethics board in the city of Milton.
And move approval is recommended by LNO.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? All of those in favor of this motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So the motion passes unanimously. Now, this is already a second vote, or this is the first one?
No, this is the first.
Oh, okay.
Not sure, I know it's been on the agenda, I remember.
It's, that was on LNO. This is the first vote in council. Yeah. But LNO just approved it last week.
So this is the first reading then?
Yes.
Now we are on to planning and zoning, specific implementation plan for high-site enterprises' office building.
Move approval as recommended by Plan.
Second.
It's just lighting a landscape and signage. All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So the motion passes unanimously. The next one is the request for tax, tax incremental district number thirty assistance for Hamid Nugani for a mixed use three-story building at 1908 Parmenter Street.
Move approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I wasn't around, is there anybody who can give, like, I mean, I read the packet information, but is there somebody who can give me a three or four sentence explanation of this?
Sure. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have as well. This, this concept was previously proposed and approved for a three-story building at the old Pens and Pleats site on Parmenter Street. The owner of the property, Hamad Nugani, purchased the property probably about ten years ago and tried to save the, the building that was on the site. Unfortunately, it was infested with termites, and it could not be saved. So the building was removed, and now for the past year or two, he's been developing concepts for what he would like to build on the site. He's proposing a three-story building. The first floor and the basement would, would be a restaurant or a cafe-type use. The second story would be an office and might likely become his architectural studio. Right now, he's, he's got his business right behind City Hall here. And the third story would be one residential condominium unit. So it was previously, the only real change to what he had previously proposed and received concept approval for is that previously he was looking at two units on the third floor, and now it's, it's one unit. And, you know, he was, in looking at his extraordinary costs, we identified about four hundred and eight thousand in extraordinary development costs due to it being an extremely narrow site, it's only thirty-three feet wide, and soil conditions on the site, and the need to remove buried foundation that's, that's below ground there. So, you know, we looked at the TIF projections for the property, and it, it will not generate four hundred and eight thousand in new TIF increment. So the recommendation is for three hundred and forty-eight thousand in developer financed TIF assistance. It is one hundred percent of the increment that we expect that the project will generate.
Any other questions for Abby about this project? Any comments? Okay, Robert, are you, any more questions?
Abby did a fine job of explaining to me what's going on, so thank you.
All of those favor of, in favor of this motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So motion passes unanimously. On to item number thirty. Request for increased Walpur finance tax incremental district number thirty assistance for Milton Center Phase One.
Move approval is recommended by Finance, which was a conceptual approval. Bill, help me with what we said.
Massetering precedent.
Conceptual approval, and that would include the concept of a look-back provision that would identify a target rate of return, and then a look-back with a potential reduction in the TIF assistance if the rate of return exceeds that. I've been working with Matt Fleming on the details of that, and we'll have that in the full agreement available to go directly to council on July third.
And the other part was that this was a non-presidential approval, a conceptual approval.
Second, then.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I think this is a bad precedent, and I do not support it in Finance. I think we're, this, this development is built. I don't believe it passes the TIF funds test. And I don't believe that, I think the agreement was struck by both the city and developer at the time. They all agreed to those numbers, and I think that's what we should maintain and not add additional money now at this point to build up retail space.
Any other questions or comments, including Larry?
Nothing from me.
Okay, then, all those in favor of this motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, six one. Well, all right, we are on to the recommendation and proposals. Item number one, recommendation of changes to public notifications for re-zonings, conditional uses, and zoning variances. Abby, you want to take it?
There was some interest... There was some interest, um, that, that came up from residents in Middleton and I think the council as well in discussions about the Addison project in learning more about what other cities are doing, um, in terms of public notification for rezonings in particular. Um, so Mike's intern Craig Brewink put together this nice chart, uh, comparing, uh, what we're doing compared to other cities. I was happy to learn that, um, in terms of mailings, um, we are pretty favorable compared to other cities. We also, um, post public hearing notices on the main page of the city website and I think we were the only community that did that. And we're the only community that has a specific listserv for public hearing notices. Most communities will send out a, a plan commission agenda that includes a public hearing on an agenda, but they don't have a separate listserv for public hearing notices. Um, but where we were short of other communities is that, um, two communities, Madison and Verona, post signs on the property. And I myself, having gone by those signs in, in Madison, I think that they're a very effective way to get the word out when you see, uh, a, a notice on a property that it's being proposed for rezoning. There's one on the Brennan's Grocery Store on University Avenue and you can actually.
How big are the signs?
Um, the ones in Verona are two by two and I didn't print out the sheet, two foot by two foot.
I could see it being bigger than that, so that it's really clearly visible.
I think they're meant to draw your attention that there is something to read on the sign. So the word, you know, public notice is printed very large and bold. If you want to read the details, you have to, you know, pull over and actually go up to the property to read what's being proposed.
Be, public notice of rezoning or something, so that.
Mm-hmm.
Bribing by can get the feel that it's a rezoning.
Yep. Yeah, and when we discussed this with the plan commission, they were interested in seeing signs posted for rezonings, conditional use permit applications and, um, variances before, that would go before the zoning board of appeals as well. So they kind of wanted to expand the scope a little bit. Um, initially, when we, we had the discussion about posting the signs, we were concerned about, um, staffing limitations and sending staff out to post the signs in the winter and we were pleasantly, um, surprised to hear that Madison actually has the applicant go out and post the sign. Um, so, uh, Mark, Mark Wolford, who's on the zoning board of appeals, brought me the sheet that I included in your packet, um, showing what the city of Madison requires. They, they make the signs available for pickup and they ask the applicant to fill it out with the appropriate information and it, it is required to be posted on the property by a certain date in advance of the meeting. Um, so there was support for that at the plan commission. We likely would need to increase our fees, but I think it could be just slightly to cover the cost of, um, printing the signs, making them available for people to pick up. The other idea that was discussed at, um, plan commission was rather than sending an envelope with a tri-fold letter for a nota, notification for a public hearing, is that if we send it on a postcard, you don't actually, you know, somebody isn't required to actually open the letter to read it, so they might be more likely to see it, especially if we put it on a bright, bright colored postcard. Um, there might be an opportunity for some, a slight cost savings in mailing there, which could help offset the cost for a sign. Um, the other idea that was discussed at plan commission was official notification to the alderperson for the district and if we know of an active neighborhood association, we would notify them as well. We do try to do that now as a matter of course, but we don't have anything firmly written into our policies that states that that's a requirement.
Well, this is just the recommendation, yes Susan, but.
Does this need to go to LNO as an ordinance change or is it just a policy change?
I think eventually it will need to go to LNO because I think we would need to change the fees and I believe that would be governed by LNO. Um, we want to do.
And if we're going to adopt something mandating that people put these up themselves, certainly.
Then I would make the motion, we refer it to LNO.
Yep, and we'd like a little bit of time just to prepare the cost estimates and get everything firmly in place.
So, now the recommendation to send to LNO.
Send it to LNO.
Yes, Robert?
Um, I have maybe just things to think about, um, and I'm not on LNO, but one of the things I think about is signs, uh, two-dimensional signs are great in one direction and really hard to see in other directions. One thing I've seen someplace, I have no idea where, was kind of basically two signs that kind of form like a V shape and you can kind of see them from just about any angle. Um, might be something that could be considered if this is something that signage is, is, is a question. Um, I, this isn't totally related here, but just, just a question. Uh, under the mailing, mailings to property owners of two hundred and fifty feet, uh, it says big box ordinance requires three thousand feet. It's a little off, I just have, have a question really quick. And that is, what constitutes big box, I mean, you get a, an apartment complex, for instance, and it's going to be a lot, it's going to affect a lot larger area than somebody doing something to their own private household, a single-family household. So I guess my question is, uh, that might be something that needs to be looked at in the future as well, uh, to understand whether, great, we're doing better than a lot of the other communities, is two hundred and fifty feet far enough for a big project that maybe it doesn't technically fall under the, the area of a big box?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm glad you brought that up because one thing that I, I forgot to mention is that I know that there is, there, there are some residents in Middleton that have posted on next-door neighborhood. And I just saw it today and they don't feel that two hundred and fifty feet is, is, you know, a far enough distance for a rezoning. Um, the big box ordinance is specific to, uh, large big box retail store. So like a Walmart, supercenter, a Target store, those, those types of stores. And that was adopted, um, around the time that the Tribeca rezoning was approved. There was some interest in, on the common council in learning more about what other cities are doing to control those types of developments in rezoning decisions. And so we, we prepared a lot of research looking at big box ordinances in other cities and what they ultimately, um, landed on was a, a wider notification. Um, so I think that.
Also requires a public hearing before even initiating consideration of the project.
That is probably true. I don't remember, I don't remember, um, the details of it. I think the way that, um, that we defined big box, it was based on square footage of the store and the number of SKUs that were.
Really huge big.
Yep.
Emily, you have a question?
Three thousand square feet.
Um, I just wanted to comment, I've lived in both Madison and Middleton with, uh, getting the notification and when I got the Madison one, it was bright yellow, a postcard, and I remember getting it and putting it on my board and then I attended. And it was standing room only, so lots of people went. And I recently got one for somebody on my block. I opened it a week later and it was the next day or two, didn't go. So if, if there is a, a thought process, I would recommend a bright colored postcard. And thank you.
Good.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of motion to send it to LNO, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion is passed. Resolutions. This is 2018 dash fourteen, resolution releasing public stormwater drainage easement for Miramont Strategic Behavioral Health 3169 Demming Way.
A move approval recommended by Public Works.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay.
Yeah, I, did the Public Works.
I thought we did.
Included all the conditions in the city memo?
That we did, yeah.
Because I looked at the CSM and I didn't see it. Wondering if these are being coordinated to get to replacing easement.
Okay, so you want to change it to include all of those conditions?
Yes.
Listed in the, uh, agenda comments.
Yeah.
And those are fine.
Is that okay with you?
Yeah, that's what, what, that's what Public Works did, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes, need a motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Adjourned.
Thank you.